...on salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have roll call members?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Yeah.
Trusty Martin.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Here.
Okay, now, I need motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings, the April 6th organizational meeting, and the April 6th regular meeting.
So move.
One second.
Second. We didn't actually say anything.
Any additions or corrections, either one? Not all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion is carried. Now, the presentation of petitions, communications, notices, and general question period for members of the community?
I have a compliment and I have a complaint.
Okay.
I was fortunate enough to use the boat ramp that the village put in here in the river this past week. That's a well-kept secret. I mean, it's a nice spot, it truly is. But, back my boat in, the ramp, there's a drop-off on the end, and when you come to come out, if you don't realize it, it's a big problem. My boat trailer came out in two pieces. Now, I thought it was, you know, me being stupid here, so I started asking around, and apparently I'm not the only person that this has happened to. I don't know how the people suffered damage, but, um, I don't know, I talked to Terry about it, and he said that one time there was some shot rock off the end where it went out gradually, but obviously the ice must've taken it out. I don't know what can be done, but, it truly is a nice spot to launch a boat, but boy, you have, you better beware, because...
Canoes only, right?
Well, I mean, I don't have a big boat, it's just that, once the wheels go off the end of the ramp, there's no way they're gonna roll back up, and in the dark, you don't know this, so... It was a big joke, everybody's asking, "How come your boat trailers in the back of your truck?" But, it is a nice spot, I couldn't believe it. That's my gripe for the year.
Anyone else? Chad, do you have anything, we're just getting to the end of the public comment part?
Oh, perfect timing.
Can I make one comment, though? My husband, the other day Larry went down and they pushed the rock back up against the end of the ramp.
Oh, did they?
That was in the river, so...
All right, yeah, we went down.
There was one spot to the east of me, said they didn't quite get it all, but I know they did work on it the other day.
They need some more time.
So...
Oh, if I back it in again, I'm gonna wash.
Okay, was there any other public comment?
Uh, yep, I just got a couple of questions.
Okay, you just say name and where you live?
Yep.
For the other people?
Chad, my name's Chad Poyer, live in Champlain. Question on one of my apartment buildings here in Champlain, the 1141 Main Street. I had the sewer issue, sure everybody's aware of that. Just wanted to see where we were with it. I did talk to your guys' insurance company, and the lady said the claim was denied, so I just wanted to see where we stood, and what action needed to be taken, or...
Okay, I just got the letter back, I haven't had a chance to review it, it came in today.
Okay.
So, if it'll have any comment, tell me, and read it, but we can get together with you afterwards.
Okay. Good. Well, I just wanted to see, just, I wanna make sure the ball kept rolling with it, that's all.
Okay.
Good. So I can, we'll talk about it when you review the letter, or?
Yeah, probably tomorrow with the review, just to have a chance to look at it. It just came in today, just...
Good. Cool. Well, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Your building looks great, though.
Thank you, it's a good one.
You gonna buy the other two now after our production?
Well, it's like, handle one issue at a time.
I guess the store, oh, amazing. The shelving all along there, oh, it's just exquisite.
Yeah, pretty bad in there.
It's bad in there. Okay. Now, report of Wayne Ketro, Coast Enforcement?
Um, I sent out a couple of letters, one of them for the stone building I found Oak Street, and the guy is in the process of lining up contractors, he's gonna tear it down. And I said, "Well, either you have to rebuild it or tear it down," and he's opted to tear it down and sell the vacant parcels, so that should be happening here within the next month or so. The other parcel, the KEL properties over here, the yellow buildings, I sent them the same letter, and they all went certified, so we did get them, but I've gotten no response back from them. My position on it is that they either repair the building and fix it so they can at least seal it up, or they tear it down. Now, I don't know what the village feels about this, but that place is just deteriorating. It has a lot of structural issues, I personally don't think it's worth saving, but that's up to them, but they're not responding. They take the letters, but that's as far as it goes, so you'll have to let me know what you wanna do with that.
Well, the ten days is up, so we really need to do something on that.
Yeah.
Because we'll just keep sending these reds.
Well, generally what happens is, once I do this letter part, is if you wanna pursue it, then Mr. Marshall gets involved, and he sends his, his letter, if he files it with the county, and so on and so forth. I mean, it goes towards eventually tearing it down.
Yeah, I was by there this weekend, all the doors are open, pretty much open access to the building. I don't know...
Some days...
People should be wandering around in there, no?
No, nobody should be in there. Once in a while, one door is shut, two days later, it's open again, so there's no doubt in my mind, people are going through it, but these people are absentee owners or whatever, and they're just not around, and I don't see the interest in it.
There's a lot of deficiencies, he's there for sure.
And then, the only other thing is, you probably already know, but this weirdest property, that's coming up for the tax sale, that's why they're cleaning everything out of there, and that'll be sold at county auction in June, so, once we have new owners with those properties, one building's in pretty rough shape, the other one, I don't know, so whoever buys it ought to find out what their intentions are, go from there.
They're selling them to Gavik, too.
Yeah, it's all one law.
It's just one law.
Yeah, I have one question, I do, I had a lot of comments on people thought that they lock in sidewalks a little bit, like, I know you had been down there.
Yeah, there was a garbage issue last week, and I had another complaint about it today, and I stopped down there again, but the stuff that was there last week was picked up, which was my concern, so, they are keeping it sorta picked up, I mean, there's a lot of stuff there, you know, junk and rubbish that has to be gotten rid of, so, I just, every day I watch 'em and make sure that the wind doesn't blow it around, and when they're done, hopefully it's, it's all cleaned up, they tell me it's gonna be, and I have no reason to not believe them, so...
It's been working very hard.
Yeah.
I know there was a few bags of garbage, too, at that property that you mentioned before.
Yeah, yeah, there's some on the side of the...
On the side of the building, yeah.
Probably.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, do we bring that up under new business, to make a motion to have him proceed with this KEL property?
Yep. Okay, thanks, Nikki. Now, Mayor's report, just wanted to give a thank you to Janine Corson for years of service she has given us as an on-call typist fill-in when we didn't have anybody here at the office, she has opted out, and we really appreciate her work. Thanks a lot, and I wish her luck. So, thanks, Janine, we appreciate it, what you did for us. I'll also remind everybody of the annual St. Mary's bazaar, which will be held May 23rd and 24th on the St. Mary's school grounds, hope everybody can make it down there and enjoy the grounds. Maybe you might have something more on her report. Okay, that's all I have. Justy Trombley?
Um, not a lot to report on, just looking forward to what we're going to have for street repairs, and when will the guys start doing split patching?
Do you want to hit that now? That's my...
No, when you get to your report, that's fine, but that's all that I'm working on right now.
Okay, thank you. Justice Martin?
I'd like to congratulate the guys in the back for the reconditioning and the painting that they've, that they've done with the plow truck and that all-purpose tracks machine back there, it looks, it looks really good, looks pretty good. Just to, you know, give a nudge for how important maintenance is on the equipment that we have, and also, I guess, I wasn't able to attend a shared services meeting, Tom will bring us up to date on that, I guess, along with Mike.
That's all I have. Thanks, Greg. Trusty Trombley?
Um, attended the shared service meeting on the 15th of April, we received the contract from the engineer from Barton La Judas, and we reviewed him individually, then got together to add our revisions, and have since, sent it back to them, and we haven't received it back yet with any changes. I think Mike's had a conversation with him once, and sent it to him, but we're still waiting for that contract. Things are moving slow.
We're guys putting a lot of time and effort into it, appreciate your persistence.
They were awful anxious, when I talked to them two weeks ago, you know, getting this thing moving forward, they had projects they wanted to get started, but then, it's been two weeks, and I tried calling them today, he was out today. There's a few technicalities in the legal language, which we had in there, that our attorney had us put in, that they're not comfortable with, and they're having their legal people look at it, so it's unbelievably slow, for some reason, I don't know.
It's probably that tiny year when you have a lot of projects, and this maybe is on the top of the pile?
It was, when they first started putting contract together, but we did soon.
Uh, one thing that they did still was the, not the requirement, but they wanted to make sure that the, you know, the engineers and the water departments would work together and would do these flow tests, and we told them they would, and I didn't see any reason why the village, or the town, or the village or houses point would have any objection to that, nobody voiced any objections to it, so, when we get to that part, we'll let you know.
No problem at all. Thanks, Tom. Justice Garrett?
Uh, well, we'll start off with the bazaar. That is next weekend, and we are the kickoff to all the bazaars, so Champlain's bazaar is of course the most important one, so everyone should come and attend. We have lots of live entertainment this year, something new, we will be having a band playing, and I'm sorry, I cannot think of the name of it, and I apologize profusely, but from 6:00 to 10:00 Saturday evening, we'll have live entertainment, which will be really nice, apparently it's a very good band. Slab City, thank you, is playing. Thank you. So they'll be there Saturday night at noon on Saturday, we will have our auction, Steve Brody is donating his time, we'll come up, and we have lots of brand-new items as well as slightly-used items to auction off, it's a really, really good event. On Sunday, we kick off with the parade at noon, in honor of Samuel D. Champlain, so it should be a semi-exciting parade, with some blokes and whatnot pertaining to the event. After the event, we'll be having the country squares, they're gonna do a demonstration, square dancing for us all, and we'll have the brass, yes, brass, but a wooden, wood, brass, what's that brass band that comes? Norwood Brass Band. They are phenomenal, and they'll be playing a little after the parade as well. Then we will have a country western band playing from 1:30 to 4:00, and they are Back, Backroads Country, something to that effect, I know it's Backroads something. And then we have two high school bands that are gonna play, one at 4:00 and then at 5:00, they're gonna kick off their talents, give them a little bit of show, and see us what they have got. We also have a new raffle this year, which is phenomenal, it's $2,000 cash prize, there are only 300 tickets being sold, so if you haven't gotten your ticket yet, you might wanna rush out to the church and get it, because they're getting down there, they're $20 apiece, and again, we are only selling 300 for a $2,000 cash prize. And I think that's it for the bazaar, of course, if any of you want to help with the bazaar, we are always looking for help, call me, call the church, call the school, we'll get you involved. We also opened up the bazaar to some community groups this year, we've got Woodmen of the World that are gonna be taking care of the dunking booth, and there's promise of some very good people. Some good people that are going to be dunked, I haven't got any details of who yet, but that should be fun to have some good people to take a throw at. Uh, let's see, what else with that? The firemen are running the bar, a few of the Catholic daughters are doing the dinner, so we've got a lot of outdoor help. We're also serving breakfast this year, which is new, it'll be served from 8:00 to 11:00. Well, it wasn't new, it wasn't announced before, but we are continuing, and it's announced, we will have breakfast from 8:00 to 11:00, and I think that's it for the bazaar. Now, onto the quad, then Monday after the bazaar is the kickoff of our town events. We have this really great brochure that we did up, Town of Champlain, that shows all the events that we're doing together, which is really cool, but it's gonna be a Memorial Day program with a dedication at Point Affair, a reburial of some bones that kind of got dug up from some soldiers, there was an encampment there, so they're being, reburial of the dedication. We have lots of people that are gonna be part of it, the Woodmen of the World have donated a flagpole and a flag, a brief history of Point Affair will be given, there's gonna be an unveiling of the plaque in a wreath lane nearby the Daughters of the American Republic, "America the Beautiful" is gonna be sung, we're gonna bury the bones, salute all the fallen soldiers, and we'll have taps, and then a brief history of the White House. And then afterwards, there'll be a luncheon served at the American Veterans, I think that's what it's called. Wait, got the other list here. The Legion, yeah, the Legion. So, and that's open to everybody, which will be kinda nice, and it's just a nice piece of our history to be part of, so that is going to be Monday at 10:00 a.m. It'll last roughly an hour, and then at noon, luncheon will be served. T-shirts, pins, stickers, keychains, all those kinds of things will be available, which are memorabilia for this event, get 'em early while they're hot, before there aren't any left. And again, our continuation, the bishop will not be able to attend now, he's leaving us, so on August 2nd, we're, we're looking for, our meeting got canceled today, so I didn't know if they finalized, we're looking for a priest to say part of the Mass in French, kinda like the olden days, so that'll be kinda cool. Then we're gonna have the dedication of, rededication of the statue, and you'll see that work has begun down there, that'll be done by Wednesday, the walkway will be in, and then the ladies are coming in and doing landscaping, which will be really, really nice. And after that, we go up to the cemetery, and then again, there's gonna be another luncheon, and that's gonna be at the Knights of Columbus, following those events for August 2nd. And then the following Saturday, will be a big town-wide party down at River Park, River Bank Park, okay? And again, we'll do hot dogs and ice cream and all that kinda fun stuff, so, it'll be really, really nice. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Did you get all that done? No. No need to have a lot, just so people hear it.
Okay, well, have the report of the court treasurer?
Um, everyone's been copying with the April revenue and expense reports. I also copied everybody, since this month is our end of the year, the bounce of transfers.
Okay, let's start with that. Does anybody have their copy of the bounce first? Okay, I would indicate motion to do the transfers, at the end of the year.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Tom, any discussion? If not, all in favor of completing the account transfers? Well, actually, I'll roll call for that, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Justice Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore? Aye. Hey, everybody's been copying the warrant?
I have one to add.
Okay.
It's $171.42, it's to play it against sports, to come out at age 73, 10.2.
How much is that?
$171.42. She had money left in the bank, yeah.
Uh, should we also add, because of this grant for the statue, the second part of it won't come until we submit receipts for the first part, and that's gonna be finished on Wednesday, so what should we do in that case? Because we won't meet again until June, and it has to be completed in June, because that's grants written out of the village office.
How much is that?
$500 is the first one.
I can't wait till the June board meeting to be able to argue.
Well, you can't get the second half until you pay the first, until you submit receipts for the first $500, it's gonna be over that, they're gonna do $1,000, so, in essence, either we're gonna float the money, or St. Mary's is gonna float the money.
Well, that one, becoming a village count, so...
We've already received $500. Yeah, it's grant money, it's here. It's sitting here.
Yeah, we've already received half of that. We've already received half of it this, this year.
Right, and you're gonna get the second half with this finalization of the bill, so should we approve payment of the first $500 out, so we can then submit to get the other $500, instead of waiting till June?
Well, if it's gonna happen before the end of fiscal year, before the end of the month?
Oh, yeah, they're gonna get it on Wednesday, because they've gotta, we've gotta pay for it, so what's gonna happen is, we're gonna float out money on this until we get reimbursed on it.
But how, who do we know we have to pay, we don't have any invoices on it?
Oh, you'll get it Wednesday.
They'll write it to us.
I'm just telling you, they're gonna be completed, so the invoices will come up here.
No, I'll just show you the thing, the, we're gonna pay it on this warrant, and...
Oh, Wednesday, this Wednesday. This Wednesday.
That's right, today's Monday.
I mean, they may have it already down the rectory, I don't know, I tried to call, but nobody answered. But I thought, you know, if we're gonna, it has to be completed in June, and so we have to submit this to get the next $500.
Well, maybe we could add it to this warrant, approve it for this warrant, and then not finalize it until we get the bill? Is that how it would be?
If you approve it, if you want Donna to do the warrant, she can do the warrant piece like this, as long as they're approved, up to that $500, I can always do a hand check, I don't need to, we don't need to wait, I can do it on the, if it's approved.
Okay.
Okay, so we want...
As long as we can incorporate that to the motion.
We're adding it to the warrant, we'll just be writing a hand check to pay...
To expend up to... Okay. All right, so I do that, I make a motion to expend up to the $500, initial $500 of the grant for the statue of Samuel D. Champlain, in $500, in the amount of $500.
Okay, approve the warrant, ask them to do the other.
Okay, and that, too.
You got that done?
Uh, I guess so.
Okay, could you read that back, so we're confused?
Uh, well, basically, I have to, I mean, make a motion to expend up to $500 for expenses for the initial grant, is what you're saying?
That's Samuel D. Champlain statue?
Yeah. And approve the warrant, that, too.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Is there any, any discussion? If not, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Justice Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore? Aye. Okay, we'll have the report of the superintendent? Oops! I thought...
Was that everything on the warrant?
Yeah. Include the warrant.
Include it, that's what we have to do, it's... Uh, okay, the report of superintendent?
I'd like to echo what Greg and Amy had said, the guys did put a lot of physical labor into revitalizing some of our equipment. Looks brand-new, they did a fantastic job, Cherry put a whole dump body in the dump truck, that'll get many, many more years out of it, just with that, that repair itself, so, those guys did really well with that. Tomorrow, Kim, I have a superintendent meeting, and I intend to get all of that information, the cost of asphalt per ton, so we can figure out how long of a road, or how long we can go, how, how many feet we can fit, and with that, that's when I'm gonna solicit to borrow the hot mix machine that we used last year, we just put the hot mix asphalt in it, and it seems to hold much better for pop holes than the cold patch stuff, so... I don't know what more in there than that. I'd like to mention the GSA meter, I'm working with those folks up there to help, to help with us to install that, that new meter, we have all of the components, we have everything here, there's just, they own the property, and I'm waiting, Jeff and I have sent emails, and we're waiting for a response back to initiate that, that exchange for the new meter for the old. That's really all I have.
Is there a chance that they'll say no to putting the new meter in?
No, they won't say no, they're just, they just have a huge, huge inspection, every two years, you get this really large inspection, and they have so many facilities from the scene all the way over, so, they're kinda, the swelling is starting to go down a little bit, and this, this issue right here really isn't on the top of the list for them to jump all over, you know, so they're trying to pull their boots back on and get back into the fight, they got hit pretty hard, so... I don't foresee any, any real challenges of working with them to get moving in that direction. They're aware that we have here, and they are aware that we are fully intending to put it in and start using that as a resource to collect accurate data for revenue, and they are aware of it, and they don't have a problem.
Okay, were there any questions? Now, Juanita, could you read correspondence?
Uh, letters to Glen County Department of Personnel regarding personnel change forms and job applications for DPW, crew relatives, public works maintenance, personal title, correspondence from Stafford Owens, Hiller, Mernane, and Trombley regarding Mr. and Mrs. Robert Luckett property at 36 Plank Street, notice of claim for damages from Chad Poyer for his property located 1141 Route 9. Memo from Deputy Kirk Barkholm regarding resolution for road transfer, letter to St. Mary's regarding the annual bazaar, letter of violation to Cal Properties regarding our properties at 1163 and 1165 Route 9, letter of violation to William Anderson regarding property at 93 Oak Street, copy of local law number one of 2009 regarding solid fuel burning appliances for the board's review, and additional correspondence from Mr. Marshall, correspondence from Janine Corson resigning as the on-call typist, correspondence from State of New York DOT regarding CHIPS funding, letter to Thomas Mernane regarding Robert Luckett's request for contract expense reimbursement, thank you, letter to Janine Corson for her years of service as the on-call typist.
Okay, I don't have anything, any road business, does anyone have any road business that's going forward? If not, we'll proceed with new business, we have, we have a resolution to accept Locust Street from the county, is, do you have that one? What that is, I guess everybody read about that, that's, the county, it was listed as county, they're straightening up all the places that should be town roads, village roads, whatever, and that's, the section is in the village, so, transferring it back, asking us to transfer it back to us, so, go ahead and read it.
Resolution transferring road ownership, where as section 115B of the highway law, removal of a road or part of a road from the county road system... Whereas section one fifteen B of the highway law, removal of a road or part of a road from the county road system states upon the recommendation of the county superintendent of highways and pursuant to a written agreement with the governing body of a town, village or a city or in the event such an agreement cannot be reached with the approval of the commissioner of transportation or the supervisors or any county may remove a road or part of a road from the county road system. Whereas the county, Clinton County Highway Department Superintendent recommends that point two-eight miles of road known as Locust Street, which is in the local residential neighborhood within the Village of Champlain limits, be transferred to the Village of Champlain. And whereas this transfer is recommended based on the fact that this roadway serves no county purpose and represents ingress and egress for local neighborhoods only and therefore local ownership and jurisdiction would be more appropriate. And whereas the Clinton, although the county highway superintendent has determined that said road recommended for removal from the county road system is not owned in fee title and has been acquired by highway, by use and transfer and ownership and jurisdictional responsibilities would be accomplished by a plain deed. And whereas this portion of the road was transferred from New York State to Clinton County in nineteen sixty-one, therefore this portion of road should have been transferred to the Village of Champlain at that time. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees at the regular meeting held on Monday, May eleventh, two thousand nine, hereby approves the transfer of above-mentioned portion of road from the Clinton County Highway Department to the Village of Champlain.
Can we get a pay for?
Really? Do we want to make a motion to accept that resolution?
Sure, let's get the road over. Want to add to it? Always fun, anyway.
Okay, we have a second? Kim, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. We also have correspondence, correspondence asking us to do a resolution backing the connector highway. I would indicate a motion that we do up a resolution to act out at the next meeting for giving our backing for that would be a good thing, I guess.
So much.
Second.
Any discussion? Tom, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Okay, we have a request from Terry Leecourt and Juanita Manos asking for a carryover vacation. In the past, we allowed this vacation to be carried over, to be used by December thirty-first. Accept a motion to allow them to carry their vacation over?
Remove.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. And the other new business we had is to continue on with pursuing K E L industries to, is that what they're called?
K E L properties.
K E L properties. To continue pursuing the removal or repair of the building downtown? Motion by Tom, second?
Second.
And by me here. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. I have no further new business. Is anyone else having any new business?
Do we need to do anything with the outdoor furnaces that, well, that our attorney sent to us?
I'm not sure. We had some changes and I wasn't sure if Mickey had a chance to review the changes yet.
Well, other than the one time that you had given me that list, I had a couple of concerns that he came in and Mr. Marshall looked at it and he was gonna change something.
He did. He did find those in his desk.
Huh? It's in my file?
Yeah.
Those are, the only concerns I had, it has to be something I can enforce. And the first question I was gonna be asked is, what can I put it in my garage? So is it a wood stove? Is it a boiler? I mean, I felt that was my concern, so if he addressed that, I'm happy with it.
Okay, well, could you review that, Mickey, and maybe have it ready for the next meeting? I just wanna make sure that you had looked it over again, because there was some changes.
No, I didn't see it since the change.
Okay.
Probably my file.
I want to make sure that we, I'm throwing around there, if we do have something that we can work with, okay.
And I'd like to call a very brief executive session discussing personnel issue, very brief, guaranteed under five minutes.
Did you want to make that a formal motion?
That's a formal motion.
Okay.
I have one other thing, so we can either do it now or after, but that's fine.
Okay, well, is it okay to do it now, so we can do that part of it?
Uh, basically, I'm just reminding the board that you still have not approved the different policies that were done at the organizational meeting that was tabled because you wanted to review that and that has not been done, so you really need to get that finished up.
What needed to be approved?
All of the policies, personnel policies, procurement policy.
I'm sure that everyone's supposed to look at it.
Right, I'm sure. The, the procedures of public meetings.
Okay.
And investment policy, which we may have something to add to that anyway, but we just got information, Juanita emailed someone and they got back to her a week or two after now, so. But that needs to be.
Okay, thanks for the reminder.
And one other thing also, the mileage, which was tabled also and you were copied with. I did a little survey and you had that last month, so that needs to be done too.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Okay, we'll be ready for next meeting.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Amy.
So I made a motion going to executive session, discuss personnel issue. I was gonna ask.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have my answer.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
I'm gonna get my answer.
Any requests?
I have a big question for you.